Thank you. So today is April 7th, 2021. The time is 5:03 PM and I am calling to order the Baldwin Park City Council Special Virtual Meeting. City Clerk, can we please get a roll call?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Alejandra Avila.
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that, City Clerk. Chief Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody looking to comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have one caller. Let me call him now.
Okay, what is his name?
David Seegrist.
Good afternoon.
Hi, is this Mr. Seegrist?
Yes, it is.
Hi, it's Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you from the city of Baldwin Park regarding your effort to make a public communication. You have three minutes, okay?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it. Should I start now?
Go ahead.
Good evening, honorable members of the Baldwin Park City Council. My name is David Torres Seegrist and I'm appearing tonight on behalf of my clients, Baldwin Park Tail Corp., Medical Grade Farms VP, VRD Inc., GSC Capital Group. By way of background, each of these owner-operators was an original applicant in the fall of 2017 for cannabis licensing in the city. Each one has paid more than $500,000 to the city by way of mitigation fees. In fact, three of these entities are still working on obtaining their occupancy permits. I want to be clear that these folks are not millionaires or faceless large corporations with unlimited cash flow. They're made up of hard-working-class people. My clients have created jobs in the city, they pay rent, and a couple of them have been property owners in Baldwin Park for over 30 years. This is not the first time my clients have voiced concerns about mitigation fees or the massive disparities between the development agreements. They've met with council members over the last several years to discuss glaring problems with the terms of the development agreements and the mitigation fee scheme. However, every time, the response is the same, and it always comes from your city attorney. Quote, "You signed on the dotted line." Quote, "You negotiated these terms." Respectfully, these terms were never negotiated. And there have been several things that have occurred within the recent several weeks that call into question the integrity of the mitigation fee scheme and the development agreements. Primarily, the knowledge that former councilmember Pacheco pleaded guilty to federal corruption charges involving bribery and also the settlement agreement with Ruth Lee. But putting that aside, think about it, if these are truly mitigation fees, how and why would the amount be bargained for? Or why would they be different for any of the owner-operators? Wouldn't the amount charged by the city be dictated by the true and actual impact of commercial cannabis on the city rather than be an artificial product of negotiations? I would urge you all to please read through each development agreement. I'm certain when you read each one, you will see that there is at least one owner-operator's agreement, RD Tropicana, when compared to all the others, that you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. That group got more than a million-dollar head start over all owner-operators. Respectfully, the mitigation fees, we've got questions. How are they being retained? Are they being used exclusively to mitigate cannabis impacts on the city? Where are the yearly reports that are required to be generated by the city showing the balances of the mitigation fees owed, the fees collected, the interest earned? And ultimately, what are these mitigation fees being used for? Also, what are the specific impacts of the cannabis operations on the city?
Thank you, Mr. Seegrist.
For police code enforcement, but where are the correlated studies?
Yeah, okay, Mr. Seegrist, you are out of time at this point.
Okay, I appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for calling in.
Have a wonderful evening.
All right, thank you, you too. Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody else looking to speak?
No, Mayor.
Great, thank you. At this point, I do move to close public communications. And I believe we are going into an open session and we have the Safe Parking presentation. So we can go with that, I believe. Manny?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Tonight, we have the Overnight Safe Parking Program for People Experiencing Homelessness presentation. And we have Armando Nava from the Family Service Center that will be taking the lead from here. Armando?
Thank you, Manny. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Armando Nava. I'm the program coordinator for the Terry G Muse Family Service Center. And today, today we'll be presenting along with my colleagues, Volunteers of America of Los Angeles, Craig Henry, Senior Program Manager, and John Ruffin, Safe Parking Manager, representing the Safe Parking Program. The Safe Parking Program is for people living in their cars. The program is funded by LSA and operated by Volunteers of America. And at this time, I would like to turn over the presentation to my colleagues Craig and John.
Hello. Safe Parking is basically a program that was implemented by LSA last year to afford the opportunity for individuals who are experiencing vehicle homelessness a place where they can reside safely for the night. The program basically encompasses the participants being on the lot in a safe conducive environment. There's also case management services that's offered for the clients. The ultimate goal is to actually get the clients housed. We're on the housing-first motto. That this lot primarily, you guys would be either allowing us 20 to 30 cars and each individual would have their own separate space. We do have gifts and services that we do offer outside of case management, i.e. vehicle, minor vehicle repair, DMV services, pay for assistance with moving in if they need rental assistance for, to move in, security deposit, so forth and so on. We have been currently operating six Safe Parking Programs from Lancaster all the way to San Pedro. The majority of our programs have been very successful. The clients actually benefit from it because most of our clientele, from what we're finding out, would much rather prefer to be in their vehicles than to be in a shelter. So we just try to accommodate and meet them where they are. Right now, our newest venture is San Pedro. That's a 30-car lot. It's over in San Pedro off of 7th and Beacon Street in a primary area where the homeless count has risen. There is a shelter right next to it. So we offer basically two types of service. You have the shelter and you have Safe Parking. If you guys have any questions about Safe Parking, I'm more than willing to answer at this particular time.
Good. This is Craig Henry, the Senior Program Manager for the Safe Parking Program. John said that most of our lots are successful. I'd like to reiterate and say all of our lots are successful. Go ahead, John.
Yes, if you guys have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer.
Yeah, so I have a question. So this, this program is administered by LSA. So let's say, you know, we have somebody in our city that's currently living in their car. Can they just show up to the site or do they need some sort of referral or how does that work?
We have a direct line directly that goes to a case manager that's on 24 hours. So anybody from your city or the adjoining cities for that matter can contact and the case manager will take down their information and set up a date and a time for intake. And that's the process. Anyone can be referred. The police can refer 211, another service provider. So basically, we'll take a walk-on or a drive-up, as we call it, and we'll just allow them that night, but they would have to meet with the case manager that next day to have an intake before in order to be bought into the program.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question, please.
Yes, Mayor.
So you said once they're there, they are provided wraparound services and you also provide rental assistance. You said a down payment so they can get into a home. Is that what you mean by that?
Yes, we currently work two different modalities for housing. We have problem-solving, which is also offered through LSA, which helps with the first and last month and security deposit. And it also helps with payment for utility bills. And then we also have within BOA ranks what we call Rapid Rehousing Funds that we utilize for our clients to help assist for their housing needs.
Okay, and I have another question. So once, once these safe parking places are established, when we have people go there and park overnight, do you have security in the area? Do you allow them to be outside with a group of people or people come over and be around the site? How, how, how do you control that?
We have monitors that are actually scheduled onsite during what we call business hours. Our business hours typically run from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So at that time, we would have monitors on. We don't consider our monitors security. They're actually monitors because they're actually trained and equipped to deal with our clientele from a homeless population. They're, they're trained to handle de-escalation. They're also trained in documentation. We do not allow congregating. The purpose of the program is for individuals to come into the lot, the lot to be safe and quiet so that they can get a good night's sleep and be prepared for the next day.
Okay, and if you do happen to have individuals that are not following the rules, do you ask them to leave the premises?
Yes, before our monitors asked them to leave the premises, we would try to work with them to actually see if they would just cooperate. If that doesn't work, we have access to having Latin leads, which are supervisors, on hand to whereas they can come, they can assist the monitors that are actually at work. And if need be, they called me, and then at that point, if I have to make a decision, we will ask the participant to go. If the participant refuses, then nine times out of 10, we would call the police. But we pretty much haven't had that type of issue. If we had to ask someone to leave, they pretty much leave. We haven't had any issues where they, you know, argumentative or want to stay or cause a problem.
And that was my next question, how our police would get impacted by, by these people that may not want to leave the premises in case they are not following the direction that you're asking them to follow. So you said it's minimal the times you have to call the police?
I've had, I've not had to call the police for a client that's actually that we're accidentally since we've been up and running for the last year. My interaction with the police has been either something is going on, on that lot or to report a theft for maybe our stuff being stolen. But outside of that, as far as from a participant standpoint and a community standpoint, we haven't had those type of issues with police involvement.
Okay, and then once.
Excuse me, John. John, could you also explain to her at the time of intake, and please excuse me, I'm having some voice issues this evening, but explain to her at the time of intake, how all the rules and regulations of the lot are explained to the person and they sign that indicating that they are willing to follow the rules, regulations, and guidelines of each lot?
Okay.
Yes, that, that is received upon intake. They are given full, given a full understa- understanding of the expectations for the program.
And if somebody's requesting rental assistance, what's the turnaround period for them, for them to receive that? And do you find, help them find a place to live or you just give them the funds? How does that work?
Okay, for us, like I said, it's two different modalities. It's problem-solving and there's also rapid rehousing. If, when we come across someone who actually has found a place, our turnaround time is solely based on the time when they can come in, sign the documentation. We can get it to the corresponding person, i.e. problem-solving LSA representative or our BOA representative. Get it signed off. Once it's signed off, it's submitted from a BOA standpoint to our corporate office and a check is cut in form of third party with that individual's name to whatever leasing agency, apartment owner, or however that process may come up. With problem-solving, it's basically the same thing, but we submit the paperwork and the documentation to LSA. The turnaround time is anywhere from seven to 14 days. But we do make contact with the landlords and advise them of what our intentions are, what the turnaround time is. We do work hand-in-hand, not just with the participant, but at that point with the landlord as well.
Okay, and then you said it's LSA and Volunteers of America. So who maintains the area once, once they leave in the morning? I know they have a time they need to leave by. Do they help you keep it maintained? Or is it just something you do for them? Or do you ask them so they can take some pride in where they're staying to help out and make sure it's maintained clean?
Well, from the time we take on, our, our purpose is to make sure that that lot is clean. So if our monitors come on and the lot is, is not clean, that's part of our setup with our monitors. They're tasked with making sure that that lot is actually clean and ready for receivership. The day-to-day, how could you put it? Cleaning and everything that goes along with whatever service provider we're working with, that still will continue on their behalf, however they work it out. But for us, when we come onsite, whatever needs to be done, we make sure that is done.
So you've never made it part of the program for the people that are staying there to be actual volunteers to make sure the place is maintained?
No, that, because part of the program is a safe conducive environment for them to sleep. That would disrupt their sleep time. Because basically, the parking lot is only open during the night hours.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for your help.
John, let me jump in and also mention, John, can you tell them about the Housing Navigator that we have in the program that will be assisting the individuals with housing as well?
Yes, as far as from a case management standpoint, if we do come around and find somebody who is eligible for housing, they want housing, part of that process would be our own basic internal referral, whereas our case manager would give the documentation and submit the documentation to the housing manager. And at that point, the housing specialist would take that information and primarily become that person's one-on-one working with the landlord and the client.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this presentation. I'm quite excited of having this service here in our, in our city and along, hopefully with other cities. I, I absolutely see the value of, you know, what you guys provide to, you know, help folks off the street and provide them a safe environment to spend the night. As we often know, you know, those experiencing homeless, homelessness, you know, sleeping at night is, you know, the times in which the worst activities or, you know, people are victimized and so forth. So I have just two questions, if you could answer them, you know, for us. The first is, how, what do you do when an individual family shows up, you know, somebody with a, with a child or a, or a school-age youth to one of your facilities? If you might, if you could answer that first, please.
Okay, they would be, they would have an intake performed and conducted just like an individual. However, we would base them as a family and our first primary goal is safety for the kids. So we do have family shelters within BOA that we can actually refer out to keep the family unit intact because that's the ultimate goal, is to keep the family unit intact. However, if the family does not want to go into the family shelter, we do anything and everything that we can to support them to make sure we maintain the family unit. So that has happened. We have had families before.
Let me jump in on that. We also have another program that's funded by the federal government called Family Tree, where individuals can come during the day to receive case management. It would be a co-enrolled program. And we, it's also a Volunteers of America program, which is called Family Tree. And they can also get therapy if the family needs their family therapy. They can get housing through that particular program as well. They can also receive food, clothing, hygiene, all of that through our Family Tree program. So it is a wraparound approach that we use by co-enrolling this particular participant into our other programs to receive greater services.
Thank you. And then my second question, and this is more of an ongoing question, not only for, for, for your folks and your business partners, but also for Mr. Nava and the rest of our staff, is how do we share information in regards to the clients that you're interacting? And I mean this in the sense of, you know, the vertical integration of services. So, you know, we all know that the left is speaking with the right hand and so forth. Can you share a little bit of that process for us? You know, I don't know if it's Greg or, or Armando that can speak to that?
I can jump on that, John. What we do at Volunteers of America, once we co-enroll, we hold what is called case conferences, where all parties that are dealing with the family or the individual review the case, go over its needs, and work together to come up with a common goal, which is sustainability. So we do hold case conferences with the client in the room with the other facilitators, whether it be a Family Tree person, whether it be a Safe Parking Case Manager, whether it be, we also provide, we have SADKI with the Southern Alcohol Drug, Southern California Alcohol and Drug Program. So if the person has indicated that they have some type of substance abuse problem, we also refer them to our program for substance abuse issues. Our system, the new terminology, substance use disorder. So we all get together, all the case managers that are dealing with this particular individual or family, review the case and come up with solutions with them.
Thank you. And then one last thing. Are you also able to accept folks that may not necessarily have a vehicle, but, you know, they have a shopping cart and they're looking for a place to, you know, lay their heads in a safe environment?
For those individuals, we would refer them to one of our shelters or a shelter in an immediate area. This program primarily is for vehicles for individuals who are experiencing vehicular homelessness. So to answer your question, no. However, we wouldn't turn away as far as referring them to appropriate sites, so to say.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much because, you know, each of us, and I think each of the council members always interact with various homeless, our homeless population and, you know, we're always looking for ways to help them, you know, seek support, but more importantly, move towards some sort of transitional, permanent homes. And, you know, this is something that's, you know, once we have this established, we can refer them at least, you know, to your sites, if it's during the day or during the evening, to kind of, you know, again, be able to wrap our hands around them and provide them the support and as needed. So thank you for everything you guys have been doing. I've been quite a big fan of VoAD and, you know, all the other projects that you guys do across the county. So welcome to our city and hopefully you'll be here for a very long time with us.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Craig and John, for that explanation and the presentation. At this time, I would like to go over some of the locations that we have located here in the city, either they're city-owned or non-city-owned. The first two locations is the Cruz Baca MetroLink Station and the next one is the Barbershop, which is located at 14824 Ramona Boulevard. And also, we have contacted three faith organizations in the city. The first one is First Christians Church. The next one is Church of the Redeemer in St. John the Baptist. And also, we're going to be going over the pros and cons of each location. Thank you. First location is the Cruz Baca MetroLink Station, located at 3825 Downing Avenue. The pros of the location is close proximity to the police department, access to large parking spaces and centrally located. The cons is a portable restroom visible, the length of the program requirement, and that depends on when we start the program. And it is semi-residential and business area. The next slide, the next location is the Barbershop. Like I mentioned, it's at 14824 Ramona Boulevard. The pros is close proximity to commercial businesses, access to 20 parking spaces, access, access to secure fencing and centrally located. The cons is the length of the program requirement. Once again, it all depends on when we start the program and adjacent to Ramona Boulevard and to Las Palomas Housing Project. Now, our faith organizations. First one is the First Christians Church, which is located at 1461 Baldwin, Baldwin Park Boulevard. The pros is promising collaboration, close proximity to the Terry G Muse Family Service Center for program assistance, access to 40 parking spaces and is centrally located. Cons, pending formal approval by church council. Morgan Park heavily utilized may deter participation, the length of the program requirement and is adjacent to Ramona Boulevard and Baldwin Park Boulevard. Close proximity to downtown and major shopping center and also it might impact the Kaiser program, as you are aware, we're doing currently with vaccination. Our next location is the Church of the Redeemer, located at 3739 Monterey Avenue. Pros is promising collaboration. It is 1.2 mile from the Terry G Muse Family Service, Family Service Center for program assistance and access to part 80 parking spaces. The cons is pending approval by church council. The church, it is surrounded by residential homes and again, the length of the program requirement. And also, there's Kenmore Elementary School, which is across directly from the church. Our last location is St. John the Baptist Catholic Church, located at 373870 Stewart Avenue. Pros is promising collaboration, 0.8 mile from the Terry G Muse Family Service Center for program assistance, access to 90 parking spaces. And again, cons is pending approval by church council. It is, it is surrounded by residential homes and apartments. And then the length of the program is the requirement. Also, they operate a school from kindergarten through junior high. At this time, if you guys have any questions, any, or any feedback, Honorable Mayor and Council, Council Members?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that presentation. My, my concern with some of the sites would be the libraries and the schools. And that leads me to question. I can't imagine that we would do like background checks on those who are staying overnight. Do we?
Well, as Mr. Craig and John explained, in regards to the time, the participants will be leaving way before the kids get to school. And it's something that maybe John and Craig could answer. John, do you guys do background checks on participants?
Not sure if they're with us. All right.
I'm still here. Yes. Unfortunately, we don't do background checks because that would be a barring or disqualifying factor. We provide services for any and all individuals. So as far as doing background checks, no, we don't perform or conduct background checks on our participants.
And so, and I, and I understand that concept and that approach. I, I think that you could understand, you know, the concerns of having children in the area. So tell me again, what, what time? Every morning, what time the cars would be cleared out?
So as we spoke with John and Craig, the time is, could be adjustable. So we, they normally operate from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Say we do go with a church and they do have maybe a program ending at seven or eight. They explained to us that they could adjust the time. They could start at eight or nine and also leave the premises if they need to leave before 6:00 AM. They could do that. So, but normally they operate from seven to 7:00 PM. But again, John and Craig, if you guys could maybe elaborate a little bit more in regards to the time?
Yes, our programs are based on the particular site. Each site represents its own individual prospect. So what we do is we work with that community, those stakeholders, to find what is going to be most feasible for that community. So our hours typically, we have from 6:00 PM, no later. So our hours typically, we have from six PM, no later than six AM in the morning. All of our lots end at six AM. Our monitoring staff wake up our, our first wake up is five. Second wake up is five fifteen by five thirty. The lots are primarily clear and our staff is off the lot at six AM.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. Um, because yes, I I do think that's something that we need to consider, given the proximity of these locations to, again, the library or schools. And I I have a question for Armando. Are we uh being asked to make any decisions on any of these sites? Or do all of these, is it possible that all of these sites would be part of the program?
Well, it it all, again, it all depends on what uh organizations are willing to participate. We've talked to John and Craig. Say, for example, if uh Church of the Redeemer could only do, say, Monday and Wednesday, and the other churches could take over those um those other dates, then we're able to move, you know, the program to a different location. And we, uh, and again, we don't have to decide. It all depends how we want to run the program and what times.
And what's, which one of these sites would allow or has the potential to allow for the parking every night?
So when, the one we, I think we have more um, uh, I guess control and better to run that program, uh, we cruise the Cruz Baca Metrolink Station, uh, because we cooperate there on a daily basis. Whereas the other, they said they, the other faith organizations do decide to participate, but it does conflict with any other programs. We would have to uh move the program from location to location.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think that the Cruz Baca site, uh, you know, there, it's next to the police department as well. And I don't mean to, I don't mean to put a negative um cloud over this this operation. I I just want to, you know, think of, think this through and make it successful for those who need the the services. And um, also those that, you know, are in the surrounding neighborhoods. So it seems to me like the Cruz Baca site, it's right next to the police department. It's next to City Hall. Um, it's not far from the Terry G Muse Center. If it can offer nightly service, then it's consistent. It's pretty centrally located. Um, so I think I would be favoring that site if, you know, if you ask me. So, um, and again, it's not close to any, you know, an any, any specific use that where children will gather. So that would be my preference and my recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes, if I may add, we actually do have one site that is actually up and running. Our East Los Angeles Metro site is in partnership with Metro. So we do have a site, something similar to that site proposal, to where as you have access from not just the commuter trains, but you have a rally station in close proximity, and you also have freeway access, you know, to where you leave out or come in. So just to throw that in, it, so you guys will know about some of the services that we offer.
Thank you, John.
Also, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers, just like to also inform you that we still need to apply for funding through uh San Gabriel Valley uh uh Consortium, COG, as well as LASHA, so we could return back to the city council with additional information in the next few meetings, city council meetings. And uh, we could prioritize which sites, which sites would work out the best. I tend to think uh, the Cruz Baca Tron Center is also probably the best, the best site. Um, I also think Terry, uh, the uh Church of the Re- Redeemer seems like a pretty good site as uh as well. Uh, but we could definitely bring, bring back uh a additional information as soon as we find out if uh we will be funded and we receive the uh funding from LASHA.
Great. So, I mean, I think it makes sense to apply. So I think before we, you know, we we stick to a a certain site, I think it'd be nice to maybe reach out to all of them and get a for sure answer on how far, you know, you know, how far they're they're willing to to do uh on their part. And then that way, we we have a better idea of how we can plan around it, right? Because I think some of these sites are great. Uh, you know, and if, and if they're willing to work with us, then, you know, we don't know that until we ask, right? So I think it's, it's maybe one of the first steps we should take, reach out to all of these sites, uh, get a better idea of, you know, what they're willing to do and and if it benefits us, great. If not, then we can move on to the next site.
Uh, but yes, also, yes, Mayor, also as a small footnote, uh, there may be a small stipend for uh hosting the site. So if one of the faith-based organizations were to host a site, uh, there may be a small stipend for them to receive to o- offset any uh costs. Thank you. This concludes staff's presentation. If uh you have any quite more questions, be more than happy to answer any of them.
No, and then just to be clear, did we have to pick a site before you applied or you can apply and then pick the site?
We could apply and pick a site after. We, we have a handful of sites, so I, I think one of them will probably work out.
Okay, so it's, it seems like we can kind of simultaneously take the two different factors on at the same time, right?
Yes.
So if the rest of council is okay with that, I I think we should move forward with that. Thank you. Great. Thank you for that. And then, you know, thanks for being here and that presentation. Thank you, Manny. I know we we kind of asked you and you you got on it right away. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you guys for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Great. And so at this point, uh, I believe we have a Prism Insurance presentation by our HR and Risk Manager, Laura Thompson.
Mayor, that one, that presentation was moved to the other meeting.
Oh, was it? Okay, great. Sorry about that.
Yes, we moved it. Sorry, Mayor. We moved it to another, another time.
No worries. Great. Okay, so then at this point, uh, we are moving on to recess to closed session. So I will see uh some of you in the next meeting.
Mayor, before we close,
Uh-huh.
Um, we need to add an item on um that came up after the posting of the agenda. Um, we would like to add on the uh employee im- appointment for the CEO. Um, information came up after the posting of the agenda. We would need a four-one vote to add that onto closed session.
So we need everybody back on right here, right?
Um, yeah, I say hopefully didn't leave.
I think they did. So let me uh text them real quick.
Looks like we have Alejandra.
Okay, I'm going to uh call the rest of the council members.
Mark, is everybody back?
Still waiting for Councilmember Hernandez.
Is Ale- is uh Mayor Protem here?
I think, I think city attorney, as long as we have a a a vote of four, we can add it on.
Yeah, so I thought Mayor Protem was in here, but I don't see her anymore.
She left.
She was.
Okay, yeah, so we're waiting for one more.
I think Monica, Councilwoman Mar- Garcia, she joined.
Yes, I'm here.
So I see a, I see council member, I mean, I see ma- I see all of them now. Okay, so we're all here.
Robert, do you need to lay the foundation?
Oh, you are on mute.
Robert, you're on mute.
Thank you. Yes, uh, Mayor, City Council, we need to add uh, or or I'm suggesting that we add as an urgency item, the uh employee appointment. Um, we did get uh information that occurred after the uh 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 publishing of the agenda. Uh, it is a rather urgent item. And um, uh, there was no way for us to give proper notice to it. In order to add it as an urgency item onto the agenda, we would need a four-fifths vote, based on the facts I just laid out.
Great. So we just uh make a motion to add that item to to the uh, that urgency item to the agenda, correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
And then we have to name that item or is that okay?
Yeah, the, you're naming to the uh, you're adding to the closed session agenda, employee appointment. CEO.
So we're making, so making a motion to add an urgency item to the closed session for the uh position of CEO.
Employee appointment, employee appointment.
For the employee appointment for the position of CEO. Great. And then, so I have a second. Is there any objections? None? Great. So I believe that, uh, Robert, that becomes a five oh and we are clear to do so, correct?
That is correct. That item has now been added to the closed session agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. And I believe now we are good to go into the closed session.
Correct.